Okay, Jim, you're all set.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Town of Henrietta Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, July 7, 2020. Members present are Matthew Borkowski, Patricia Brill, Craig Eckert, Steve McIntyre, Lawrence Neal, Rick Page, and Town Staff Dan Mestrela, Planning Board Attorney, and Chris Martin, Town Engineer. I also want to acknowledge Councilman Stafford, who's in attendance this evening also. Thank you for coming. First item on the agenda tonight will be the minutes of the June 16, 2020 meeting. The Chair will entertain a motion. So move.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Page and Mrs. Brill. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. In the opinion of the Chair, the ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you. First application under consideration tonight is a discussion item for Market Commons, a proposed renovation of the former Chili's Restaurant. The Planning Board will discuss the revised building elevations and patio area. May I ask who's here representing the applicant, please?
Matthew Oats with Benderston Development.
Hello, Matt. How are you?
I am good. Chairman, yourself?
Good, thank you. Thanks for coming this evening.
Thank you for having me.
Yep, I will turn the floor over to you, Matt.
Alrighty, let me share my screen. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we are proposing to do a renovation of the former Chili's at the Market Commons Shopping Center on the southeast corner of Marketplace Drive and Jefferson Road. We are proposing to subdivide it into two restaurant spaces. The Marketplace Drive side would be for a Mission Barbecue, which is a fast casual barbecue restaurant. We have been in front of the Town Board and we have received the special use permit to allow for the restaurant use and also for the outdoor patio. We don't have a tenant yet for the inside space yet, but we are also proposing a patio for there. We are maintaining the general look of the Chili's building, but we're working on enhancing it. We are proposing to modify the entrance to add additional storefront windows along the front, and then we want to carry that storefront look around on the inside portion of the elevation, which would then wrap around to the side. So this is the side that is facing Pie Pizza. As part of that, we would be adding in a covered aluminum storefront cover over the entrance, and we would be matching that architectural look for covering both patios on the two sides of the building. We would be adding in a new decorative stone masonry column at the front entrance here. We would then be tying that look into the structural piers for each of the two patios we are proposing. We're proposing to do some enhanced landscaping in front of the Chili's. We are going to eliminate the multicolored look at the Chili's, and we're going to be repainting the siding to more match the existing stone veneer that is there, and then to tie into the overall plaza aesthetic that we have. In addition, we are also proposing decorative railings around both outdoor patios, and then in between each railing panel tying it in will be traffic-rated bollards to protect the patios. Overall, we think it's a good reuse of the existing building without having to demolish the building and build new. We're excited to hopefully bring a new tenant to the Henrietta area. It would be their first location in New York State, and overall, we think it's a good continued reuse of the plaza. Happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
Thank you, Matt. Did I hear you say it's going to be two restaurants?
Correct, yes. We're looking to split it up and make it a multi-
The barbecue, right? Where's the second one going to go?
The Mission Barbecue would be on the Marketplace Drive half of the building, and then the other one would be on the, call it the Pie Pizza Chick-fil-A side of the building.
Understood. Okay, thank you very much. I will open up to the board for any questions or comments. Since this is just a discussion item, Mr. Page.
Given the fact that you're going to have two occupants rather than one, are the number of people that you expect to be in the building still commensurate with appropriate parking?
Yes, there'll be less seats in each of the two restaurants, and overall combined, I believe they actually have less seats overall than the Chili's restaurant provided.
Okay, okay. And is there a dumpster or dumpster enclosure on site?
We're reutilizing the existing service area that's behind Chili's. So the dumpster enclosure that's already in the back of the building will be reusing that service area, so we're not proposing to build a new one.
Thank you.
Mr. McIntyre?
Matt, the grease trap that they've got on site, will both restaurants use the same grease trap? Will it be adequate for both restaurants?
Yep, it is adequate for both restaurants. It had formerly been maintained by Chili's. Benderston sent us going to two restaurants. Benderston will be maintaining the grease trap. Prior to putting the grease trap in service, we'll have the existing grease trap pumped out. We'll camera it to make sure it's in good condition and is able to be reused, and then we'll put it back in service.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Record. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hi, Matt. Craig Eckert.
Craig, how are you?
Good, thanks. It's a great reuse. Didn't hear about Mission Barbecue. It came up in another conversation and somebody was drooling at the mouth already just to hear about it. So it's a good reaction from there. The only, again, concept I think that I'm quantifying with maybe of my other board members is you're now going to have two kitchens, two sets of bathrooms. Is it going to be still a shared space?
Part I- Was that a shared grease line, did you say?
Yeah, you're going to-
So it'll be two completely separate restaurants, so separate interiors and everything else. The way we kind of work it is we'll install when we're renovating the building to set it up for the multi-use. We'll install sanitary sewer and a grease line inside the building that both restaurants are then able to tie into. What we've also started doing actually is we then take the lines and we run them about two feet outside the building and cap them with cleanouts, so that we then have a good way to access them if you ever need it without bringing equipment into the restaurant. We found from a maintenance standpoint, it just makes things much easier, but everything will be sized correctly for it.
So what is the existing square footage now of the old Chili's? And then the second question is going to be, what's the square footage of the two?
So the existing square footage is 5,503 square feet, and the proposed is the same square footage. We're not adding any additional building to it. The only thing we're doing is doing the covered patios on the two sides. There's no new square footage.
Mission Barbecue is going to take up how much of the five?
3,500. So then there'll be 2,000 left over.
And then you can still make that work with two kitchens, two bathrooms?
Yes.
Well, that's great. It seems like you're eight pounds of interest in a five-pound bet.
It depends on like the type of restaurants and the sizes. So two examples, one would be Core Life behind here versus-
Can you maybe lean a little bit closer to your mic? It's kind of hard to hear you.
Okay, so a good example would be behind this building, the Core Life and the Smash Burger, where the Core Life is about 3,500 and the Smash Burger is closer to 2,000. It's just certain restaurant users use less square footage. They don't have as many seats inside. They go more toward the takeout, a little bit more, things of that nature. So it would just be the user who'd be looking for a 2,000-square-foot space.
And that seems to be applicable to something you could find considering you got one at Smash Burger.
Yes, we definitely think.
Okay, that'll be great. That'll be both buildings now that are being occupied to some degree, at least with the Chick-fil-A going directly east.
Yes, so yep, so you'll have the Chick-fil-A to the east, and then hopefully with the Mission Barbecue coming in, we find a new user for this, and then most of the front would have gotten reused, and we've gotten those two vacant buildings back in the service. Or the one vacant building and then the-
Thank you, Matt.
Yep.
Anyone else? Mr. Neal?
Thank you. Matt, this is Larry Neal. Just a quick question about whether you would have to come back to the Planning Board with site applications for these revisions. Is there anything significant that's going to change to the outside of the footprint that would require you to come back here?
I don't believe so. The only-
Matt, this is Chris Martin. You want me to answer that one? Because this did come in for an administrative site plan review.
Yes, go ahead.
So again, Chris Martin, Director of Engineering and Planning. We did make this come in for administrative site plan review because of some of the changes. However, we thought that the building elevations, we wanted the Planning Board to see those. So that's why we asked the applicant to come to tonight's meeting. Do you want to add anything to that, Matt?
No, I think that covers it. We're not adding any square footage at all to the building, and we're staying within the curb lines around the building, so we're not proposing any changes to the parking field or anything else like that. It's all within the interior curb lines around the footprint.
Thank you, Matt. I'm sorry. Once again, what was the total capacity for both facilities at one time?
Approximately, I believe it's approximately about 180 seats would be what we're expecting, and it's the same square footage, 5,503 square feet.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the board? Town staff? All right, Matt, thank you. I think I'm glad to see that that building is going to get repurposed. And again, with your neighbor to the east there, Chick-fil-A, it's going to be nice to see that corner hopefully busy again.
Yes.
So thank you very much. I appreciate you coming in tonight.
Thank you very much, everyone. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Hey, Matt?
Yes.
I did have one last question for you, but Heather Voss said that she's a better soccer player than you. Is that true?
I would say yes. That is very true at this point, yes. Probably always true, too.
Thank you.
Thanks. Have a good night, everyone.
Thanks, Chris.
Okay, next item on the agenda is application number PB 324, Forest View Subdivision for preliminary subdivision approval of a 47-lot residential subdivision with 90.6 acres of open space and a conservation easement area located off of Ward Hill Road in the rural residential zone district. May I ask who's here representing the applicant this evening, please? Hello, Peter?
Is that working?
Not sure the mic is on yet. Mrs. Brill hasn't waved her magic wand yet.
Just hold it until the light comes on, and then you have to hold it really close to your mouth.
Check. There we go. Good.
Thank you.
Peter Vars from BME Associates. I just saw, as I would want to add this evening, since we last appeared on June 18, is, and with the public hearing being closed, but there has been some things that have transpired since then that I just want to be sure that the Planning Board is fully aware of.
Peter, may I just interrupt and just acknowledge the arrival of Supervisor Schultz. Thank you.
So first of all, we would acknowledge that when we were here on June 18, one of the conversation points was the new comment review letter from the Town Engineers Office, Mr. Martin, dated June 10. We did provide a written response to all of those comments. I hope that you do have that. The gist of those responses were that those comments, we did not have any issue in being able to address those. Second of all, we have met with the Town Board. The Town Board also commissioned a traffic study to be completed by, at the direction of the Town of Henrietta. Those results have been presented, and they were discussed also with this board back on June 18. As a follow-up to that, there was some inquiry about accident data. That was provided also to Mr. Martin. And in the words of the Monroe County Department of Transportation, their words were that there are no issues whatsoever as it relates to traffic safety on Ward Hill Road, including the intersections at East Henrietta Road and Pinnacle Road. And that data was provided to the Town of Henrietta. Also concerning drainage, we spent a lot of time on June 18, walking you through the drainage plant. We received a letter today, July 7, from the town's consulting engineering firm, Vanguard Engineering, that basically states, and I will quote it here, says, "We recommend the town verbally approves the SWIP, the Storm Water Pollution Prevention Plan at this time. Please have staff ensure the remaining comments are addressed at the pre-construction meeting." So my point in bringing that up is that those consultants that the town retains to review our drainage work, it appears that they are satisfied with the drainage study that's been provided. Lastly, there's been a lot of discussion about the use of the clustering, Town Law 278, and the open space incentive. We provided to both the Planning Board and the Town Board materials dated June 25 that outlines how this proposed subdivision meets the goals and the criteria of Town Law 278, of the town's open space incentive law. We also reference our February 5 and October 9 application letters to this board, where we specifically address the rural design guidelines, which really are the crux of utilizing Town Law 278 and the open space incentive law within the rural district. So not going to go through any of that. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions, specific questions you have. But my point is, is that, you know, over the past several months, we have responded to all of the questions, comments, concerns raised by the Town Board, the Planning Board, and the staff to what we believe has satisfactorily addressed all of the questions that have been raised to date. So with that, we'll answer any further questions you may have.
Thank you, Peter. I do want to acknowledge the effort on both sides that have gone into this application. A lot of information, comment, concern, passion on the part of the residents, and certainly a lot of effort on your part to mitigate their concerns. So I know that there was a lot of interest on both sides as we've gotten to this point. This has been a long time coming, so I'm glad that we're here. And I just want to thank everybody for their contributions on both parts to get us here, and we'll see where this goes. I will be happy to open it up to the board for any comments or questions. Mr. McIntyre?
I'll start, sure. Peter, I listened to some of the comments yesterday. They appeared to be concerns about the pond overflowing, the banks, and flooding the land in all directions. Now, just to be clear, the stormwater pond is designed with an overflow spillway, correct?
That is correct, Mr. McIntyre. Just the, it's in this area here is where the spillway would be, the emergency spillway, which is the purpose of that spillway, is in the event that the outlet structure were to fail, the emergency spillway is there such that any overflow is directed where we would like it to go, which is primarily maintaining still the existing drainage pattern, which is the discharge, if you look down here to the south and the west, to enter the existing drainage way that conveys the stormwater out of, or off from the property, I should say.
So instead of the water going to the north, east, or west, it's always going to go to the south through the overflow spillway, because that's the lowest point of the pond bank?
That is correct, as it relates to the water from the post-development site. That is correct.
And how will that affect that area?
Pardon?
How will that affect that southern area?
The design of the pond, first of all, is designed so that it can retain, key word being retain, which means keep within its banks before even utilizing the spillway, the 100-year storm event. So that safeguard is built in, that if the structure were to fail, we can receive up to a 100-year storm event runoff within the pond itself before it would overtop the banks. And then between the spillway and the top of bank, there is what is called freeboard, which is another one foot of additional storage. So the point being is, is in the event the outlet structure does fail, there's a safeguard built in that the volume exists for the pond to hold the water within itself until the structure can be unclogged or whatever. But in the event that we have back-to-back events, the stormwater flow will utilize the spillway. That is engineered. It is sized, for lack of a better term, such that the flow is even still controlled through that spillway based on the sizing of the spillway and how it conveys itself downstream.
Thank you. Appreciate the explanation. All set, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. The Chair will recognize Mr. Neal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
I think we've gone through an awful lot, and really appreciate everything you've done here, Peter, and your team. I just want to verify some things that we've actually already talked about at length. But there's been a number of house changes in this process, and right now we are working with patio homes?
Very good point. Excellent point, Mr. Neal. I did not cover that in my introduction. It is correct. The developer has revised the plans such that it is 47, 46 lots here of detached, single-family homes. So there are no longer duplexes being proposed. Thus, there is no longer a request for a zero-foot side setback. This, the lot standards, as shown on this map and as within the subdivision notes, would have detached units with eight-foot side setbacks to the property lines. So it is a detached unit development.
Okay, fine, thank you. Just the north of the retention pond, you have another little pond there. What water is that catching in?
This here.
Is it necessary? What is the real purpose for that?
Okay, all right. This was something we covered at the 30,000-foot view last evening with the Town Board. If you had the opportunity to observe that. A stormwater management facility, generically, we say the stormwater pond, but it actually contains a minimum of three chambers or facilities. What you see here, which I believe is your area of question here, that is what's known as the pretreatment area. Everything we do in this design is governed or regulated, I should say, by the New York State DEC. They set forth the design regulations that we are required to adhere to and that your Director of Engineering and the Town's Consulting Engineer review to make sure we are in compliance with those standards. What the DEC requires is that stormwater from a post-development condition that is collected within the storm sewer system, prior to its discharge to the main stormwater facility, which then discharges the water downstream, they require it that it enters what is called a pretreatment facility. And this is a facility that is engineered such that it receives the water. It's sized based on receiving what is known as the first flush, the first one inch of runoff, because that has been shown to convey or collect the most amount of pollutants from the surface. So this pretreatment area is sized. It is planted with specific plant materials that have been shown to be aggressive in their ability to absorb pollutants from the stormwater. It's called biofilm absorption. The water enters this area, and it's basically running it through a filter, is what it does. It runs the stormwater through the filter. It has a special soil medium that's placed within it to allow water to infiltrate into the ground as an additional filtering mechanism. And then it is conveyed via pipes from this area into the main facility here that actually has two chambers. It enters up here, what is known as the four bay. That purpose of that four bay is to receive the water, allow the energy to dissipate because of being discharged from a pipe and allowing any suspended solids to settle out. And then it spills over into the main chamber, where it is detained, held back, and then allowed to discharge out through the engineered outlet structure and eventually find its way downstream. So basically, water that falls within the development area and enters the storm sewer system passes through three chambers of some form of stormwater treatment, both quality and quantity control, before it is discharged to find its way downstream.
All right, thank you very much. I'm sure that the residents are happy to hear that it's quite a process. Just a comment. I am satisfied with your drainage. I've talked to Chris Martin about it and, you know, gone over your numbers, and I'm satisfied that you, what you're doing is going to hold back the water as it's supposed to be to keep it out of the neighbors. So I'm satisfied with that. As far as the traffic, I knew going in that it wasn't going to satisfy me personally, but it did what it was supposed to do in examining the two intersections. I think the residents were a bit more concerned about the traffic on Ward Hill than the intersections. But based on what I've heard subsequently, the traffic is not that extensive, and we've done some things, including the applicant is doing some things. And I want to address that a little bit more. First of all, I talked to Chris Martin today, and they are talking to Monroe County to see if there can be some perhaps change, at least a review of the speed limit, and also perhaps put some patrol on that to, you know, make sure that people aren't speeding. Also, on last night's meeting, and I'm not putting the supervisor to the iron here, but he had said that there's a possibility that they might get, you know, some police help for the area, a constable. And again, that would help. I think that's a good idea throughout the town, not just Ward Hill, obviously. But there's one other thing that I am going to ask, not the supervisor to commit to this, but at least look at. The applicant has already agreed to putting some sidewalk on Ward Hill.
Correct.
To which the supervisor described that as the sidewalk to nowhere. Is it possible, within the next year or so, that we look at the possibility of extending them? The town extending them. And I know that we've done this elsewhere, and in fact, the town is going to extend it. So I know it's doable. Maybe there's not the money, but it is doable. And taking it a step further, is this something that, perhaps a code thing, that every time we've got somebody coming in here that we talk about putting more sidewalk on the main road?
So, couple of things. The constable program was actually supposed to be pilot-tested this summer so that we could put it in the budget for next year. That was canceled, or at least postponed due to COVID. We may try it in August. So we'll take a look at that. We were going to do it for a couple of months, but because of the reduced revenues due to loss of sales tax, we're cutting back on a lot of spending. So we're going to figure out how much we're going to actually do it for. Basically, the trial period means we're going to be paying a current deputy overtime in order to be constable. So that's, but we are going to take a look at it. So it could be potentially implemented as soon as next year. And again, that, we'll have to work the budget numbers. As far as the sidewalks go, we have a list of places where we've identified some of the roads that need sidewalks or shoulders the most. We prioritize them based on a couple of things. If we can get any state aid for it or other aid, that obviously moves it up because it really is a funding issue. We were planning to do more sidewalks this summer, but again, those were put on hold because of the uncertainty surrounding revenues due to COVID. As far as, you know, where we would put that on the list, I couldn't tell you. But it's certainly, you know, it's one of those, as I refer to them, the old country lanes. I live on one. Hilly, narrow, no shoulders, no sidewalks. It's high on the risk list in terms of, you know, that it's a risky place to walk. So it certainly is one we would look at. One of the things that we've talked about going forward, and whether we actually codify this or whether we, it's arguably already there. A year, two, or three ago, we passed a complete streets program. So we, as Town Board and you as Planning Board, whenever there is a development, I would ask that you require them to- whenever there is a development, I would ask that you require them to put sidewalks on the main or collector roads. I know you do it for the collector roads inside the development. Where that development comes out to a main road, let's start requiring them. And I'll give examples like Caitlin Trail off of Martin Road. There's a couple of developments in there. Had they put in those sidewalks, even though there were no houses off of Martin Road, had they put the sidewalks on there, we could have sidewalks almost all the way from West Henrietta Road to the overpass and then from there it would be just on our town land. So it would have been a lot easier. Now to, to do it all the way from West Henrietta Road to Middle Road, that would be expensive. So the more we can do these, I realize they start out as, as I call them sidewalks to nowhere. I realize that's how they start out, but the more we can get put in, then it's easier for us to come in and essentially patch the holes and have a complete network. So, you know, I, again, we did pass a complete streets. I know the county's paying attention to it, the state's paying attention to it. So when we authorize one of these, if they have, if the development has frontage on the main road, let's get them to put sidewalks there, whether there's houses there or not. Because again, down the road, we're going to want those sidewalks. So, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. I didn't mean to put you on the, okay. Jim, that's all that I did. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
The chair will recognize Mr. Borkowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Well, this is an interesting project. I, I've been on the board for a number of years now and I don't know one that I've had so many different feelings about. And what I mean by that is I love things like, I, I believe that you guys kind of improve the drainage that is a, a, a ongoing complaint of the people around there. I believe that putting a park in is a great thing to do in this quadrant as the supervisor mentioned last night. Although I know it's not part of this site plan. I like that we have some open space, all that new kind of stuff. What I don't like is I, there's so much I don't like. It's the same thing. I don't like the emergency access road. I know we need it by code. I don't like that if we are having to park, we're going through our neighborhood to get there. I don't like the sightlines. I've done it a bunch of times. And it, that area scares me. It's scary. Safety scares me and I know I've read the reports, I've seen the data and I'm being told one thing and I just feel another thing, which that's not my job to feel. I get it. However, this, there's some things rubbing me the wrong way. The interesting part is everything that we've thrown at you, you've thrown it back and you've done a very good job. And, and you guys always do. There were a couple of things that, that came up that do have me still with questions. And I know one letter from Mr. Skamski who's here. He is not an engineer. I believe he's an attorney, but he made some pretty compelling measurements. Did you get any, um, did you get that letter? Have you, it came out today, so I'm not sure.
Yes, I do have that.
Okay, so one thing I'd like you to cover, Peter, is he, he mentions with some kind of remedial observation that the cluster doesn't adhere to what we want. And, and before you answer it, there's another thing that the supervisor did very well last night that we failed to do in the past. And for clarity of terminology, he brought up the difference between town law, which is the 278, which is actually state law, and then the town code, which is the 295. And it's interesting. I wish we could just call it state law and town code. Before you get into the specifics on the clustering and the measurements, because I just want the math of that. Can you tell me with utmost certainty that, let's call it the state law, is not being superseded by anything that we are referencing in our town law?
Yes, I can. And just for what it's worth, how I keep that straight is town law 278 and then everything else I call local law.
Right.
That's one way I, I do it just in my own head to keep things straight. I have, I brought my notebook on town law 278 with me if, if we need it. But the point is, understand, town law 278 allows local municipalities, they actually have to adopt that law into a local law and to choose how they wish to administer it. Town law 278 sets the outline parameters. And, and like I said, we can go into it if you want, but I don't think we need to.
Yeah, I don't, Peter, I don't need specifics. I really.
Because I think the key part is, to answer your question, is your, your own zoning ordinance, chapter 295 dash 60 says, "The planning board shall have the powers and duties described by the applicable provisions of the town law, including the powers set forth in 278 of town law, provided that, in addition to the conditions set forth in 278, no plat resulting from the application of 278 procedure." And it goes on to explain it. My point being is this is important because that empowers the, the planning board to administer town law 278. What the town of Henrietta then did is when they adopted 295 dash 52, which is the open space incentive option, it identified the purpose, which is to allow for future subdivision in the rural residential district in the town to be creatively designed so that new homes located in the landscape in a way that protects rural character of Henrietta. Says, "Projects under review of this open space incentive option shall follow the process set forth under 295 dash 60 cluster subdivision." The key point being there, follow the process. So this law, open space incentive and town law and local law allows you to do this. Town law 278 allows the municipality to adopt it as the framework, but you can specifically then add caveats or criteria. One of the things, for instance, probably the simplest example, town law 278 says the municipality can identify what districts it applies to. In other words, it empowers the local municipality. And not to go down too far the rabbit hole on legal things. That is because New York State is a home rule state. And what that means is the state legislature initiates the initial town law section, but allows local municipality to adapt it to its specific needs. And in one of those needs, what the town of Henrietta did was they adopted the open space incentive. So it does not supersede it. What it does is it applies it. And there, there's the distinction there. It takes town law 278, the framework of it, and applies it in this case, because it goes on to state that this open space incentive is to be used in the rural residential district. So what the town board did was said, listen, the rural residential district is important to us for various certain things. And for instance, section 295 52 C3 identifies the six factors that the Rural Development Design Guidelines should meet. The point being is that's what was important to the town is saying, let's use clustering to address these six factors because that's what was important to the town. That's where using the framework of town law 278 comes in. Because the base principle of town law 278 is that a landowner applicant is allowed certain relief to the bulk area requirements of the zoning district in return for meeting identified benefits of the community. And that's codified in 295 52, those six factors. And I'll read these because I think it's important for this evening. It says, and it doesn't say you have to do all of these. It just says, it's the town's desire to, A, protecting existing farms and agricultural lands suitable for agricultural district. That's what this parcel does here. Fifty-four point four acres put in a permanent conservation easement for agricultural protection. B, protect land for recreational uses, including trail. That is what's happening here in this twenty-eight point six three acres, providing it for the town for future use. But as was discussed at previous planning board meetings, the developer will install the trails within this area as part of the development. In fact, there is a sidewalk scheduled within the next week with town staff to start identifying those locations. Because I believe on your June 18th meeting, you said before you signed up on the maps, you'd like to see those trail locations. C says, protect environmentally sensitive lands. In this case, there is a pocket wetland here and then we have the wooded area here. We have clustered the development onto the developable area of the property. We've put it on the land suitable for development, where the sewer can be extended, where the water can be brought in. We're not overly extending infrastructure. We're not, we're only out of a hundred and eight acres, we're only disturbing about twenty of those acres. So again, we're, we're clustering development to protect these lands. D, protect lands unsuitable for development. Kind of covered that with the wetland in this lower area here. E, provide connections of larger tracts of land that have the potential to create networks of open space. And that's exactly what we're doing here. As part of the Trail View South project or Long Trail Lane here, the town acquired two parcels of open space, about sixty acres split by the Lehigh Valley Trail. As I may have heard last evening, these trails in a way, or this, these lands really don't have a lot of access to them right now, even though they're owned by the town. The provision of this piece of open space with the dedicated connection to a dedicated street with a dedicated sidewalk network now takes sixty acres plus twenty-eight. Town now has eighty-eight acres right here in the center of south, southeast Henrietta for potential. And then F, provide or protect and enhance the rural character of the area. Between the conservation easement area here on the ag lands, this parkland, and as we spelled out in our concept plan application letter of October, our preliminary subdivision plan application on February 5th, we went down those rural development guidelines as to how this plan meets those. So long answer to your question. But the point is, 295 52 does not supersede town law 278. What 295 52 does is it applies 278 to how it would, how it could be used or should be used within the rural residential district. And what I've just went through is how we met those requirements.
Well, Peter, it's an excellent answer for one. Two, I understand the difference, but I also, I wanted that very clearly put because there have been a lot of conversations about it and it gets a little murky. So I understand that the, the code portion, the local, is for our parameters. I want to make sure that parameters are great, but we can't be in conflict with the town law. So nowhere in this, in the parameters that we're working with, are we in conflict?
Correct.
Okay, that's, I just wanted a real clear answer. So that's good. And do you concur with that?
I'm going to address that.
In a second, okay. Okay, um, so those are big things. The other part here is oftentimes on this board, we don't have a lot of oversight over particular items. Here is one that we do. So we have a bit of conundrum on how we wield that oversight because it's a rare thing we do and I don't think we're used to doing it. So that's why we're being so thorough with everything that we're bringing to you. And I, I can say you guys have, your whole staff, everybody has been really pretty good about listening to the neighbors, listening to us, listening to the town board. That there are still concerns. I guess we've had those with everything forever. But with what you've been given, I think you've done a pretty good job and thanks for your clear answer. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Borkowski, I'm sorry. The chair will recognize Mrs. Brill.
Thank you, and I couldn't agree more with Matt. You guys have addressed some very sensitive issues and topics that have been brought up by several of the residents. I know the drainage was a big issue to the east of this property on the northern quadrant. And I think the new drainage is going to help address that. We've reiterated that multiple, multiple times. I know some of the residents are still concerned with it. We've seen it, we've talked about it. And it looks, based on the engineering designs, that that is going to be mitigated. And I think they're going to be happy in the end. I asked some questions at last night's town board meeting and I'd like to thank Supervisor Schultz for answering them in the public forum because I think he helped verbalize and solidify some of the topics that have been asked over and over again as far as where issues will lie down the road if the drainage does not appease the issues that are currently in place. So we addressed that. I think the pre-treatment pond and then the two chambers and the four bay and the second pond is going to take all that stormwater and, and management appropriately. And I remember from a meeting or two meetings ago, it is a very large pond that is going to hold excessive amount of water that's even required for this area. So I just want to reiterate that. Thank you for addressing and going back to the table multiple times to fully answer and fully take a look at the residents' concerns. I think everyone involved around included by readdressing a lot of the issues. And I think with what we have to deal with here, you have done the best with it we can. And Monroe County has reiterated, based on the current testing that has been done in the current year 2020, that again, they do not have any unforeseen issues. So with that being said, again, thank you for answering those questions and taking a look at everything and readdressing them. Thank you, Peter. All set, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs. Brill. The chair will recognize Mr. Page.
Thank you. In addition to what my teammates have brought up, I've always been a big person for safety and security for our, for our residents and our children. I'm assuming that driveway to the east, excuse me, of the west of the main is the, the second means of aggress fire safety. In the comments last night during the public hearing, one of the residents talked about a crash gate. Can you, can you explain?
Yeah, the discussions we've had to date with town staff is that this driveway would have a crash gate with a lockbox on it at Ward Hill Road such that it's only accessible by the emergency service providers.
My only concern with that is, is that, and again, for, for everybody, if, if there was an accident or an incident or something that blocked the main entrance to this development, proposed development, I can understand how the emergency vehicles and, and support could get in through a lockbox, which is, but what, how would the residents get out?
The, the purpose, oh, I'm sorry, I'll let you finish.
No, it's okay, I'm sorry.
The purpose of this roadway is, is for just what we mentioned, which is to allow in the event this is blocked for any reason, that there can be an emergency response till, still provided. It is not intended, nor by code is it spelled out that that is the purpose, that it is a quote auxiliary use, a road for use by the residents. Now, in the extreme, if something were to happen here and this is block where they had to quote unquote evacuate, yes, you could likely use it. But the point is, this is provided specifically for emergency responders to continue to have access to the development in the event the dedicated road is closed off. It is not intended to be used by residents or the public, for lack of a better term.
Thank you. My, my main question was, when she used the word crash gate, it's really a, a knox box with.
Correct, and that would be coordinated with the fire district, obviously, to their specifications.
With the three conservation easements behind the residences, B, C, and D, who's responsible for the maintenance of that?
Okay, it would be the property owners, okay?
So it would be extension of their property?
Yes. You can barely see it here, but lot lines are extended, so the.
I studied it, yep.
So the intent is these, this is B here, C is here and A is along here. Those will be privately owned by homeowners. So they own it. The conservation easement would be placed on it and that will have its language as to what's allowed. Primarily, what we're saying is that the areas can be maintained by property owners. They can put gardens in it, things like that, but no structures or construction would be allowed. No sheds, no pools, anything basically that would require a building permit would be prohibited. But the goal of this, if you go back to the concept plan application last October, is originally these lands were intended to be offered to the town in dedication. But through initial discussions with the town board, while they really liked this idea, they did not like this. And I think the supervisor's gone on saying, the term he uses, the town has some green belts that are not usable by the town or the public and thus they become a burden to the town. So their suggestion is, well, we'll place the. So their suggestion is, well, we'll place the conservation easement on them so that we can provide buffering between the two uses, but let's put it in private ownership.
And I agree with that. My question was then, so when they sell that property, then the total acreage that they're selling will be their private property plus the conservation easement, and therefore they'll pay taxes on the whole thing?
Correct.
That's all, that's okay, that's fine. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I understood it. Will this be a phased project?
At this time, the developer is intending to develop it all as a single phase.
Okay, all right. And then the last thing I have is, more than one resident contacted myself or others about the option of constructing another entrance adjacent to the Lehigh Valley Trail. And as, I'm not an engineer or an architect, but as I looked at it, there's wetlands there, and there's going to be easements with, with Woodridge Trail, and, and I just don't see that as a viable option here. So I, because they asked about it, I wanted to address it, but I don't, I don't think that I could be in a position to demand that, and I think it would be over and above what would be required. So, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Page. The chair will recognize Mr. Eckert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I again reiterate, as well as my fellow board members here, the amount of extensive work that's gone into these plans to develop and address, whether or not this, and I take that into account that whether or not this project goes forward, the town has a lot of great concerns that it needs to address on this road, either for drainage and for site and safety, and addressing with the county some site distance and issues that we can already start to tackle. So I really do appreciate the comments that have come forward, and we will address them one way or the other. The only comment I think that I just want to communicate on and hear from the, the owner, as much as I relish the teamwork that Mr. Vars and his team has put into this set of plans, I, I work with Mr. Vars on a lot of different aspects, and I herald him as a very smart civil engineer, as I know you all do as well. With that being said, a set of drawings is a set of drawings, and, you know, our main mantra in construction is the only constant is change. I would like it just to kind of be commented on, if this project does go forward, that this set of drawings that could be signed and moved forward has the ability to communicate changes in the field if we come across something that deems to be dealt with, and by that meaning the supervisor. For the first and foremost part, that the reason for making any change to assign drawings will come from Mr. Schultz or Mr. Martin, and that we can address that correctly in the field. I, I think I'd just like to hear that the applicant is, you know, on board with that, understands that we did that with Trail View, some things that, you know, some things that may not have made sense, and some other things that may have, and that we can continue to, if again, we move forward, that we move forward as a group, and changes that may come up will be addressed.
Yeah, I would agree with that, and I would suggest that that protocol is outlined and documented within the pre-construction meeting, so that everybody knows what the process and procedure is to be followed.
Very good. That's the only comment I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eckert.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Portkowski.
One thing I forgot, Peter, and actually for everybody, last night there was some conversation about a letter of credit. I know that we can't take into consideration what has happened with a particular developer outside of what we're doing here. However, because this is already kind of a tumultuous thing, what can we do about an extended letter of credit for this particular site?
I will give you the basics, but I'm, I'm going to probably defer to Mr. Eckert to expand on it. But the base principle of the letter of credit, it is the financial guarantee that the town of Henrietta holds that the project is constructed per the approved plans. Basically, the town board does not approve release of any monies from that letter of credit unless town staff has agreed that that component of work has been completed to the satisfaction of the town inspector's staff to the intent or, or the requirements of the design plans. So that's the base principle. In this instance, there have been discussions and understanding that within a letter of credit, there is a town inspection fee placed in there, an amount that says, this is what's going to be secured for the town to provide inspection services, to again, assure grading is gone completely, utilities and stuff correctly. There's been discussions about that amount and what it should be for this project. Understand the letter of credit amount is approved by town staff before it goes to the town board, for the town board to approve and say, yes, this is the amount of financial guarantee we wish to accept on this project. And then the developer takes it to his bank to secure that amount, and it's provided to the town of Henrietta. So the key part is, is the amount is established by the town, the ability to release the monies is determined by the town, and the closeout of the letter of credit is determined by the town. And even once the letter of credit is closed out or closing out, on top of that, the town takes maintenance bonds on facilities that usually are two years, so there's even that added security. But with that, I'm going to, I'm sure you'll, you'll want to expand on that.
No, that, he's, you know, in a nutshell, that is the process, the inspector on site communicates with the contractor, so that linear footages and et cetera are all deemed and agreed upon. The engineer on record would put forth a, a letter of credit reduction, which would go back to the contractor and site engineer that works for the town, be agreed upon, and then we can forward that over to Chris, who approves it after I see it, sends it to Maribath for a letter back to the bank to refund funds.
Is there anything that we can annotate in these where it just provides for a higher level of scrutiny?
As we've stated, as what I've stated before in the other planning board meetings at this site, will have a increased inspection frequency.
And I've heard you say that, I just wanted, once again, to get it on record, so, thank you.
Yes, and the same inspector I'm utilizing, so we have a congruency. They have already a rapport, communication, as good or bad as some might say that it is, it will be improved, so I don't have another caveat or third party coming in and I, that can communicate.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Eckert. That makes me feel a lot better if this moves forward, thanks.
So I'll just want to clarify a little bit on the process. Whereas the initial letter of credit is set up and the town board signs off on those stuff, the reductions are actually, when they come back up to Maribath before they go to the bank, I have to sign off on it. And so, being fully aware of what's going on, we'll make sure, but, you know, what I found in, in my two and a half years being here, the one area we have occasionally released too much, for lack of a better way to put it, has to do with roads, and specifically, when you have the base course down, and I'm waiting to top coat, and it, because you don't top coat until a significant number, you know, I think it's 75% of the homes are in, if that top coat, or excuse me, that base coat sits for too long, it can deteriorate due to weathering. And what we didn't always do is keep enough money in there, that if you have to repair the base course before you put the top course on, there isn't enough money left in the letter of credit. So that's really, you know, as you look at the other stuff, when you finish a section of sewer, we inspect the hell out of it, they camera it, we know it's good to go. And it's not going to change based off of I'm doing other work elsewhere. The road is the one area where that, that can change, whether it's additional vehicles, whether it's just because it's been sitting out weathering for too long before I put my top coat down. That's the one area where I do think we have to, as a town, and not just this project, all projects, be more cognizant of that. Until that top coat is down and put in properly, I think we need to hold back more in the event that, and it, it's only happened in a couple times, but I'll tell you, we're struggling with it right now. We've got residents who are mad at us because the road's all torn up, but we've got to rip up that base coat because the road is crumbling, so.
Gotcha.
I just want to also address two other issues that came up. You mentioned the town park. There are a lot of town parks that are off of residential side streets. Breeze Park, Andrews Park, Kenwick Park, you had mentioned another one earlier today.
Bell Manor Park.
So, you know, these tend to be what I'll refer to as more neighborhood oriented parks. They're not intended to be townwide parks like Veterans Memorial or Tinker Nature Park, but those, you know, and in fact, like Breeze Park, you have to take two residential side streets to get to it. So, it's not unusual, you know, would it have been nice to have it off of the main road? Sure, but it's not uncommon either.
There's not much we could have done differently, I'm just not a fan of it, especially when we're already talking about traffic in this area, but yeah, I understand that.
So one of the things we will take into account when we design that park, is to design it in such a way as to not create an influx of traffic onto that road. So, you know, we had talked about the possibility of a cabin. We may not do a cabin because cabin events tend to be crowded, and I'll let go at the same time, right? So, you know, we'll, we'll figure out what we're going to put in there, or if we do put in a cabin, you know, maybe we adjust it in terms of how we rent it, that type of stuff. I suspect it to be more of a pavilion than a cabin, though.
I heard you mention that last night as well.
I took a notice to what the other one was.
The gate.
The gate, thank you. Yeah, one of the things, if you could specify in this, and I don't know if it's standard practice, but I would like to make sure that that gate isn't right at Ward Hill, that it's set back far enough for an emergency vehicle to fully pull off the road to unlock the gate. I wouldn't want them essentially parked in the lane of traffic, especially because they're at the blind spot at the top of that hill. I'd want them to be able to fully pull off when they go to open that gate. And by the way, I do think that most emergency vehicles, certainly the fire trucks, could crash through that gate if they wanted to, so. I'm going to keep calling that question. I'm the one who used that term.
You forgot to state your name and address.
Oh yeah, Steve Schultz, and here, it's lately.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. The chair just wants to acknowledge the presence of Councilman Barley. Mr. Mistrilla, I think you had some comments you wished to make.
I do, and I have a number of questions, and I'm just going to apologize in advance, Peter, because I think as you're aware, I seldom jump in with a lot of questions. But in this instance, Mr. Skouski has put a lot of work into writing a letter that raises a number of questions that I think should be answered and clarified for the record, so that whether there's an approval or disapproval of this, there is a record that will, that anybody who may wish to challenge a determination can rely upon. You do have the letter dated July 7th?
Yes, I do.
So first, I, I want to ask you about your calculation of the acreage that pursuant to Section 29552.13C is what drives the density calculation. And that section states that the maximum permitted development density shall be based upon a calculation of total site area remaining after subtraction of the site area containing surface waters, state designated wetlands, and federal jurisdictional wetlands, i.e. unbuildable land. So can you tell us what the acreage is, total acreage of the parcel? What is excluded and what is left as developable?
Yes, I can. The, both, oh, I apologize, correct, both are application letters, and the site plan itself contains those calculations. They have been provided to town staff. The code acknowledges town staff shall review that, and we've worked with them to be sure that we've done this correctly. To answer your question, Mr. Mistrilla, as noted here, the site contains about, total site areas of 108.5 acres. We did remove, I'm just looking for the exact number, because there are federal, there is a small pocket of federal wetlands here, 1.07 acres of federal wetlands. It's over on the Larkin property, actually, that we removed, per the code or the section you, you identified. There are no other surface waters or DEC regulated wetlands. So basically, we take the 108.5 acres, subtract out the 1.07 acres of federal wetlands, to get down to the developable area of around 107.4, and then work the density calc's from there, based on the tables that are provided in Section 3B. So we did identify those lands that were to be removed, which is, there are no surface waters on the property, there are no state designated wetlands on the property, and there is the 1.07 acres of federal wetlands, which was noted in our calculations.
And so the concerned resident sets forth the allegation that the calculations do not account for 5.02 acres of Lot 47 being neither part of the development nor conserved land. What is your response to that?
Actually, it does. Lot 47 is contained within the 108.5 acres of overall site area. And as we go through those calculations, the calculations revealed, or resulted in an allowable density, applying the open space credits, if this board deems that those are satisfied, a total density of 47 lots. Once that density is established by town law 278 and the open space incentive, we then apply what we wish to, what we are requesting, and it actually is the crux of the request to the planning board, is the lot standards we wish. What we have proposed is 46 lots, as shown here, with the dimensions that are shown at 65 feet wide by, you know, depths of 150 to 170 feet. But then we also said for Lot 47, we would like that to be this lot here, up in the northeast corner. We established that as a five acre lot primarily, because we wanted this lot to have the full benefits of use and what's allowed on it, based on the rural residential zoning of the area. In other words, we didn't want to put any additional restrictions on it. It currently has the barn. If we want, if there ever wanted to be a home built on there, the five acres would work with the barn. So, the point is, what we did is, the calculation says we have 47 lots coming to us. We proposed 46 on the subdivision street, and we said we carved out five acres as part of, to create Lot 47. That's why that five acres is not included in any of our open space calculations. So that's, that's how we've addressed that.
Very good. Next, Mr. Skouski, in his letter, describes some confusion, so to speak, on the interaction of New York Town Law, Section 278, and our Henrietta zoning code. And, and I want to address that for the board's benefit, from my perspective, and, and offer my opinion, as well as an historical perspective on this. In 2005, the rural residential district was established after a rather substantial moratorium on development south of the thruway, in order to try to preserve the rural nature of that area. Bein Associates was commissioned to do a study and make recommendations on how to legislate that, and the rural residential districts came from that. And Bein actually pretty much wrote this legislation for the town. Of note is that the way they did this was not in conjunction with New York Town Law, Section 278. Rather, they said that you should follow the process of a New York Town Law 278 review, but apply these particular, particularized guidelines that don't exist in New York Town Law, Section 278. So, by way of example, if, if we were talking about a subdivision in our one district, there would be no open space incentive. There would be requirements of, of minimum lot sizes, specific setback requirements, square foot requirements. specific setback requirements, square foot requirements and the like. And if a developer wanted to make an application for something that didn't fit those guidelines, the developer could invoke New York Town Law, Section 278, come up with an alternative design that offered a benefit to the community, but that varied from the requirements of the actual zoning code. So in essence, the Planning Board is incorporating various zoning variances into its approval of the alternative design. There are limitations, and the primary limitation is that you cannot exceed the number of developable parcels using the minimum parcel size that you could get under a traditional development. And it's a significant limitation, and by and large, it's designed to preserve open space. What BN Associates did was, rather than say, invoke New York Town Law, Section 278, said, do it this way. Put all these specifics into this legislation, and if a developer can meet all the requirements of this, they have met what would be required under New York Town Law, Section 278. Somewhat remarkably, when this legislation was passed in 2005, our code was not changed to allow a New York Town Law, Section 278, application in a rural residential district. You could only invoke Section 278 in an R1 or an R2 district. In 2014, a developer came in and wanted to put a development into the Rural Residential District. And the attorney for the planning board at the time somewhat insisted that it had to be authorized, 278 had to be authorized for the Rural Residential District. At the time, I was the town attorney, and I disagreed with that, but his viewpoint prevailed. So what I'm saying is, if you take 278 out of the picture, you don't have to use it for this development. What this development has to meet is 295-52.1 of the Town Code requirements. It really isn't necessarily a 278 development. And it's just, it's gotten confused because it tells you
Yeah.
that you have to use the process for 278. So, you know, 278 allows a planning board to deviate from the requirements of its code, the Town, the Henrietta Town Code. You don't have to deviate from the requirements of the Henrietta Town Code, provided that what the applicant is, is offering actually does meet those requirements, and you're satisfied that it does. Mr. Skamski also points out, and quite accurately, that under 295-52.1, that the credits that are sought by the applicant are not necessarily mandatory. At least one of them is. It's discretionary, it's really thoroughly discretionary with the planning board. But I would caution that in exercising that discretion, that you'd not be arbitrary about it, that you, you know, really consider it. And I just, I want to go through those three, those three credits that the applicant is claiming, and Mr. Vars can elaborate on how his proposal meets those. And I believe that we're talking about 275, 295-52.1, Subdivision E, 1A, Public Access to Conservation Areas. Is that correct? You're claiming correct there?
Correct, yes.
And that's 10%. And that reads, where the public is granted access to conservation areas, or there's a linking of open space or trail corridors through the site with existing proposed trails or open space networks, the developer may be awarded a unit count bonus of 10%. To qualify, the general public must have regular opportunity for access to and use of at least 10% of the conservation area for pedestrian purposes. So, Mr. Vars, can you just explain how this proposal meets that requirement?
Yes, I can. So, that proposal, or, excuse me, criteria is met through the provision of the town parkland area here, 28.63 acres. As has been identified through our many appearances here, the developer will install a trail network, regardless of whatever happens here. The developer has committed a trail network will be provided through here that would allow this neighborhood to link up with existing town lands and ultimately link with the Lehigh Valley Trail. So that is meeting the requirement of linking of open space or trail corridors through the site with existing or proposed trails or open space network. So that is why we believe we meet that credit. It says to qualify, the public must have regular opportunity for access to use at least 10% of the conservation area. So there's 28.63 acres, 10%, that would be 2.8 acres. But the reality of it is, the trail through here really allows you to loo, could use almost half of it pretty easily through the trail network. And so that's why we believe we meet that criteria.
I think the next credit you are claiming is under Subdivision C for Conservation Land Ownership and Management by a Nonprofit Regional Land Trust may be awarded a unit count bonus of 5%. Is that correct?
That is correct. And through discussions we've had with the town, is really both of these parcels qualify. For instance, the Larkin easement is not only, it's going to be conveyed to two entities, correct, Mr. Supervisor? That is something the town board is doing to provide another layer here. And so, and same thing here with the parkland, the Henrietta Land Trust will be involved. That is the conservation agency or nonprofit, I should say.
And then I believe under Subdivision E, you are claiming a credit, and that reads, other. The Planning Board reserves the right to award a unit count bonus of up to 10% based on the provision of additional amenities provided by the project applicant that meet the goals and objectives of this section and the Rural Development Design Guidelines. And this is the one that, per its language, is virtually discretionary with the planning board. And can you address that credit?
Yes, I can. I think we address this credit in two forms. The first part being providing the additional amenities. And that is what we have agreed the developer is doing, which is constructing at his cost, the developer's cost, the initial roadway to serve this future parkland or proposed parkland area, to construct that road, to construct the sidewalk along it, and also to provide utilities in the form of water service. Typically, when town land is offered in dedication in the open space lands, it's provided in an unimproved state. So the additional amenity here is the fact of providing that infrastructure, that initial infrastructure to, to ultimately serve the parkland. The other component of this, it says that the applicant meets the goals and objectives of this section in the Rural Development Design Guidelines. And again, I reference you to our February 5 preliminary plan application letter, where we specifically went through the six bullet items of the Rural Development Guidelines of how this project meets that. I'm not going to read through them, but the fact is, this project does protect farmlands, farmsteads, and other agricultural features through the conservation easement placed on the Larkin farm. It does protect large tracts of contiguous open space, such as woodlots, meadows, open fields, and stream corridors. This land actually has all of those, and this plan protects all those. We're not disturbing any of those features on this project. That the design with nature during site layout to minimize disturbance of natural features of the landscapes such as stream, wetlands and woodland, woodlands, excuse me. Again, staying out of the woodland areas. We've talked about, we're avoiding the federal wetland area and that stream corridor down there. We're leaving alone and placing it within the open space. As I said a while ago, what we've done is, we've clustered this development on the upland portion of the property, on the site, on the land suitable for development. The next bullet, bullet item says, design new roadways to take into account the scale, proportions, and context, context of the surrounding area. The fact of the matter is, we have clustered this development. A 108-acre development, we've clustered it within a 20-acre footprint. 20%, less than 20% of the land is being committed to the development, and that is through the design of this cul-de-sac street and the lot layout. So that is done, and contextually, as you see this here, if you look at these neighborhoods north of Ward Hill Road, very compatible. I mean, you know, you're looking at subdivision streets with soldier, soldier courses of lots. To the west, you have the multifamily development along Woodbridge. So yes, this is compatible with the surrounding area or within its context. Bullet item, second to last, provide the visual quality of landscapes and, or protect the visual quality of landscapes and view sheds by considering the visual aspects of the new development. That is the primary reason of this area here and this conservation area here. This conservation area here protects the existing hedgerow between these residents and the lands to the east. This buffer was provided. We've had discussions with this board a lot about buffers between new development and existing homes. That is now proposed there, such that topographically, separation-wise, that it does not have a visual impact in, in the neighborhood. And then the last thing, it says, protect scenic view sheds along the roadside. And that is being done, again, we've pulled the development back into the site such that the view shed along Ward Hill Road is, we've even, we purposely have done a 100-foot setback off of Ward Hill Road to pull those houses back, such that they're actually in alignment, as you can see here, with the existing homes. So that's going to be a consistent appearance. So that's how we've met the Rural Design Development Guidelines, which is one of the, which is one of the primary concerns of subsection E1E. And that's why we believe we've satisfied that criteria for that 10% bonus. The last thing I will add, though, is, criteria E1D says, "Open space conservation, including provision of conservation easements for important open space resources on parcels other than the proposed development parcels in the Rural Residential District may be awarded a unit count bonus of up to 20% on the quality and quantities of these, of these lands." Our argument would be, even though we didn't apply for it, is that's exactly what this does. This Larkin conservation easement has been implemented to protect an identified property within the town's agricultural and farmland protection plan, a property of importance that worth preserving. It's an Agricultural District 6, such that that's what this does. It's going to allow this land to be farmed in the future through the conservation easement program. Why didn't we apply for that is because subsection E2 says, in no situation may the bonus increase the unit count beyond 25%. We felt very comfortable that we met the 25% criteria through the application of A, C, and E.
And are there any other matters in Mr. Skamski's letters the public doesn't have a chance to?
I would just like to add a couple of things. One is, an additional benefit that they're doing is we have required that they put a Y in the sewer trunk so that there is a connection point for the four houses that are in between this development and Ward Hill, that if they ever decide to connect into the sewer, they will be able to connect into the sewer main. So we've asked them to do that. Again, we asked them to offer up to those houses, that buffer space, if they want, if those individuals, a lot of times when we get these developments, the people want to control what's in the buffer. So this is their opportunity to do such. And then the third thing I'll mention, one of the things that comes out of Ag and Markets with regards to these is one of the problems that they have when they see developments like this come in is what they, the sort of the daisy chaining effect, where it's okay, there's an adjacent area with sewer, so I bring it into here and I do this. And then I do the next one down the road, and the next one down the road, and pretty soon I've taken over the whole area with sewer and houses. What this particular development does is it stops that because this area cannot be developed, period. This area is a town parkland, it's not going to be developed, this area. So essentially, it's contained. There will be no further spread of that sewer line going in that direction. So it essentially contains the spread to this last development, right? So, you know, similarly, had, when this one gone in, this whole area had a big conservation easement, there would have been no spread here. So this one does essentially meet that Ag and Markets goal of stopping the spread. So it does, it does check a lot of those boxes.
Mr. Mistralla, real quick, a total theoretical question. I actually believe that you need the optional amenities, so I'm not saying that, but theoretically, if we thought that that wasn't the case, could we deny this application based on us going, that stub road is not enough to us? Even though I know you've named a whole bunch of stuff.
If, if you denied it, then they couldn't build this, they couldn't get the unit count. They would have to downscale the number of units.
Okay. But that would be maybe a reason that we could do that in the future on something like this. So that, that would be a real logical reason why we could say no to this. Not this one, I actually, once again, to reiterate.
The?
The amenities portion. If we disagree that those were adequate amenities, we could say no.
Correct.
Okay.
If you weren't satisfied that they met these incentive requirements, you could deny the application based upon that. That's correct.
And for the record, I think that you have. I just want to know the answer to that.
Mr. Chairman, may I offer, I have a couple more small points from those other communications from our meeting today, this afternoon with the supervisor, Chris Martin. The question, Mr. Mistralla, I'm understanding that you have recapped, you have gone through these calculations per Town Code?
I did it a long time ago.
Okay. Mr. Don Young, the town board attorney, has also gone through them?
That I can't.
Okay, so that's what I was told today. I was told that you were able to calculate from the open space. Don Young calculated the open space, and then if, quite honestly, if those two weren't enough, the cherry on the top is Roland. Austin Winner has also calculated the open space.
Yeah, but, you know, so that is, that is in reliance upon, of course, the figures provided by the developer and assuming that the board finds that they are entitled to these incentives, these three incentives totaling 25%.
No, I understand. I just know Roland to be black and white. So I attribute that, that's to this concept. The other comment that I just want to touch on is there is already an existing trail network, I would say, to the east and possibly northeast of Trailview. I don't know if it was originally installed by Dr. Burns or residents from Burns Court. I've walked back there quite a bit from the backside of the Trailview project and such. So that trail system exists, which is the other part of what we talked about, connecting Ward Hill to that section. As a potential benefit, that As a potential benefit that I see, one of the other concerns that came up, two of them even today, were running on Ward Hill Road and the safety of that running, that the residents don't feel safe running down Ward Hill Road. I would then add to that, that I mean, I think the answer to that is by providing this trail network, are we giving them a secondary place, a safe place to run? I'll get, they probably have to run faster than bears, but because there's a lot of wildlife factor, but are we offering them a second place to run off of Ward Hill Road while we still deal with the safety issues on Ward Hill Road? So I did want to make note that that existing trail system already exists, I think from Dr. Burns, I'm not sure who initially installed it. It's utilized quite a bit.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board members?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Martin made a comment before he left, saying that he thought that detached unit option could be part of additional approval. We can, we need to, if we do go for an approval motion, does that have to be contained in the motion?
Chris, you there?
If I could add something, I could maybe help address that, is what I would recommend is on May 28th, we submitted back to the planning board, the updated preliminary plan application that designated the single lot or the detached unit development. So I think what I would do, or what I should say, what I would recommend is if the board feels to, is prepared to move forward, is that the approval would be conditioned on the drawing submitted with the May 28th, 2020.
So it is locked in?
Yes, because that's, that's, that's where we addressed all the written comments to date and then proposed the detached units and identified the specific lot standards being proposed.
And then the developer, if somewhere down the road, he decides to change his mind and do townhouses, he could not do that.
Right, because, correct, because the lot standards that are going to be established will not include a zero foot side setback. So variance would have to be obtained or come back to the board.
Thank you. Mr. Mestrela, anything else?
Nothing at this time, however, if after you make a secret determination, should you issue a negative declaration and intend to go forward with approval of the preliminary plat, before you vote on the motion, I would like to just chime in to make sure a few elements get into that motion.
Very good. Mr. Martin, are you with us?
I am, Mr. Chairman.
Any comments or questions?
No, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much. Do I, do I take a motion for the seeker or do I go right into that? I'm sorry.
You make the motion.
I make a motion?
Mike, did you have something?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, sure, I'm sorry.
Yeah, last night, just want to, I want to clarify, last night it was said that this project could take up to six years.
Mike, can you hold that as close?
I'm sorry. Last night it was said that this project could take up to six years. I just wanted, I wasn't sure if everybody was aware of that. I didn't hear that tonight, so. My other question is the homeowners on Ward Hill there that are being asked if they want that land, what happened, what will happen if they turn it down and the town really doesn't want it, from what I gather?
Would he add to the, for all lots?
To the, okay, so the, the new homeowner, the new homeowners would take them?
These lot lines would be extended then.
Okay.
Still placing the conservation easement though.
On the trails, if this project takes six years, when will the trails be built?
So the trails, I'm assuming, are going to be included in the letter of credit because it would be a requirement of the approval. And as such, the trails would be constructed as part of the infrastructure, which is upfront, would be constructed as part of the, the infrastructure development of sewers, roads and whatnot. To clarify the six year schedule, the infrastructure construction would take probably six to eight months when it's all said and done. But full build out of the units is obviously market dependent. The developer is estimating six years to build out 46 units based on his experience at Trail View South where he built 36 units? I'm sorry, he built 36 units within three years, but the market's a little different now. But the point is, the, the bulk of the construction work would be within that six to eight month site construction situation to get the roads paved and whatnot. I don't know.
Will that, will that road be paved completely or will it just be the, will the top coat be put on or will it just sit there for six years until it's completely built out?
May I answer that to town specifications? The utilities are put in, the stone base is installed. Once the stone base has passed a compaction test and utilities are all installed, the town allows binder course only on the material, I'm sorry, gutters, to gutters are, this road's gutted, right? So gutters are installed, stones compacted, then binder is installed. Only then will the fire marshal allow a wood structure to be installed. Once the water's turned on and the wood structure can then go up, therefore it's fire accessible. So the binder's on until the road, until the road completes, I'm sorry, the development completes 75%, then it's allowed to be topped.
Okay, okay, so it could be, it could be up, it could be several, several, several years before it's finally topped.
Correct, and that goes back to Mr. Schultz's comment on, you know, that lead time in between the binder and the top and the disrepair the binder could have.
Right.
And the letter of credit concept that we are addressing with other projects. That's a little bit of a gap in our letter of credit, I would say, for these longer, some of these longer projects.
Okay, and the final thing is just the lot size is, you know, there's some, I think there's a big question about the lot size and meeting the nine tenths of a minimum lot size. So I believe that should be, you know, addressed a little more thoroughly. So, thank you.
Go ahead, you can start. I can change.
Has been, has been represented, represented since day one, the proposed lot size within the primary component of the development is a minimum lot area of just about 9,500 square feet. Lots at 65 feet wide by 150 feet deep. It's very similar to the product down here on Long Trail Lane. It is a product that the developer has been successful in constructing. That is what the provisions of this law allows the planning board to do.
Peter, can you reiterate the?
I'm sorry.
The size, 150 foot deep by?
65 foot wide by 150 foot deep. Those are minimums, such that the minimum lot area within these 46 lots is 9,500 square feet. That is proposed in return to creating the open space in the conservation easement area. That's the whole underlying principle of everything we're doing here, which is by clustering and compacting the development into this 20 acre footprint, it's allowing to meet the rural development guidelines, which is the basic principle of the open space incentive law. So by codifying that, the town has said, in return for relief or waivers on the lot standards, these are benefits we need to see, which I've already gone through this evening, of that's how those benefits are achieved. So the nine tenths of an acre or those lot standards would be done if we weren't looking to apply this standard. And I guess, Mr. Mestrela, if you want to expand or anything I left out?
Well, I'll, I'll expand to this extent. It's a, this minimum lot in area in acres column in this code, section 295-5213B, it kind of, it just sort of stands by itself because the, the, that section is entitled determination of unit or lot count. And this minimum lot area in acres isn't referenced anywhere else in this code. And I would say that it could be problematic if, if it were viewed to be a minimum requirement and there wasn't a New York Town Law Section 278 component to this. That would be, if you saw that to be a requirement of this rural residential district, then the, the New York Town Law Section 278 portion of the application could be applied to that and that varied to, to the 9,500 square feet that they're talking about. So when I earlier said, this isn't really a 278 application, I should have said, it isn't a 278 application except for one feature, potentially one feature, and that would be the one feature.
I'll point out that that number is in the table one, unit count calculation. That's for calculating the unit count. Now, it says you don't, you could go, you don't have to go that small. So the point is, the most you get is .9 when you divide it out or that determines how many units you get, but you could go with one acre or two acres. You could go larger. That's just the minimum size when doing the calculations. If you go into the rural residential section, when it talks about minimum lot size, minimum width and that, it says right in there, lot sizes can be smaller with the, the open space incentive. So, but like I said, this number here, that .9, is for determining the unit count under the open space incentive. And if you'll notice, it changes depending on whether you, you know, what level of, what level of open space you have. So if you only have, you know, 55% or 45% open space, you're, you can have fewer, you get essentially fewer credits, fewer additional units, so.
And, and what I would add, based on what Mr. Mestrela said about, and that is why this application is under Section 278 of Town Law in addition to the local law, is the definition in Town Law Section 278.1 says, "Cluster developments shall mean a subdivision plat or plats approved pursuant to this article, 278, in which the applicable zoning ordinance or local law is modified to provide an alternative permitted method for the layout, configuration and design of lots, buildings and structures, roads, utility lines and other infrastructure in order to preserve the natural and scenic qualities of open lands." In other words, it's right in the first paragraph of the definition in that it is a law to modify the layout and configuration and design of lots. And that is what we're requesting, is we're requesting the lot standards that we've put forth on this application and which that's empowered to this board to approve through the definition of Town Law 278, which your open space incentive law says, you shall follow the process of Town Law 278. So it sends you to this law and thus gives you that definition.
Thank you, Peter.
What are the lot sizes?
The minimums are 9,425 feet at 65 feet wide. Uh, geez, you're going to make me do math in my heads? It's about a third of an acre, uh, no, yeah, it's about a quarter of an acre. So minimum lot is 65 feet wide by 145 feet deep. That should be 9,425.
No, my original notes say minimum lot size 65 by 150, and you just said 145.
It should be 145. Patty, I apologize for that.
Thank you for clarifying.
I did, I checked my math.
Still coming out to 9,500 square feet.
As the minimum lot size, 9,425. And that was, that's all spelled out in our letter of May 28th.
Any other questions, comments, the board, town staff? Okay, move into seeker. Seeker review indicates the action under consideration is an unlisted action as per section 617.7C1VIIII. The Henrietta Planning Board as lead agency has determined that the proposed action described below will not have a significant effect on the environment and that a draft environmental impact statement will not be required. This action under consideration is a subdivision application by JPE Realty Associates LP. It is an unlisted action and will not require a condition negative declaration. The purpose of this application is for preliminary subdivision approval of a 47 lot residential subdivision with 90.6 acres of open space and a conservation easement area located off of Ward Hill Road in a rural residential zone district. All relevant areas of environmental concern were identified. Evaluation and examination were carefully made in relation of the existing conditions versus the proposed site improvements. It has been determined that there will be no adverse environmental effect as a result of the proposed action. I, James Grunert, therefore make the motion that we make a negative declaration and that the chairman be authorized to sign the statement of environmental significance. Mr. McIntyre has a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say nay. In the opinion of the chair, the ayes have it. The chairman will entertain a motion on the application. Anybody else to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve account number PB 32442 subdivision.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. Is there a sufficient second?
Second.
Mr. Ecker? Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Mr. Chairman, can we do that?
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Mestrela, thank you.
I'd just like the motion to include that by moving to approve, planning board finds that the proposed plat is in conformance with the open space incentive provisions of the Henrietta Town Code in conjunction with New York Town Law Section 278 and that the applicant has satisfied the requirements of the three lot unit number incentives requested pursuant to section 295-52.1, section E1A, C and E.
A, C and E or D? Thank you.
Did you get all that, Mrs. Brill?
No, but I will review that with Dan after the meeting.
So Mr. Neal has the motion, which will include all that language, correct?
Correct, but I do have a question. Peter, are you okay with the condition?
Yes, we are.
Also, I apologize, the approval is conditioned upon the town board's acceptance of the open space proposal. It's, I believe they may be considering that tomorrow.
And I also have a condition as the letter of credit amount to be approved by town staff and town board?
Yeah, it's, that's required anyway, so you don't have to have?
Okay, I saw you have you write that down.
But two conditions.
Thank you.
Okay, so Mr. Neal has the motion and the second was Mr. Ecker?
Correct.
Yes, okay, thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say nay?
Nay. And if I could, I'd like my nay to be explained, and this is purely sightline safety issues. I think BME did a very good job.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Porkowski. In the opinion of the chair, the ayes have it and the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Before we start the Dex application, Dan, can you check that your microphone is on to the left of you?
It is.
We're gonna recess just for five minutes and take a short break here.
Okay.
Green light is on.
Okay, thank you, Dan.
Five-minute recess?
Five-minute recess, yep.
Did you hear that, Becky? Five-minute recess?
It's Heather, but yep, got it.
You got a lot of notes today.
Oh, my goodness, I'm already eating.
And did you get my thing about the sightlines?
Yes.
My no?
On traffic sightline approval.
I said no because of...
Because of traffic?
Patty, do you need a pen?
No, honey, I don't. Thank you, no, I'm kidding.
Let me jump in, Jack.
Yeah.
Hey, good job, Peter. Hello, how you doing?
Well, he is kind of far away.
And he's a very soft speaker, too.
He's sitting kind of centered.
Can you give him a favor, Matt, some more privacy?
Yeah, I think he just stopped smoking, and it's hard to pick up.
I'm not, I didn't stop the...
Mr. Burley? Charlie, how are you?
Great, thanks.
Good to see you, too. Yep. Get a lot of overtime this week. Yes.
Thank you.
Now you're looking at a little shrunk.
Yeah, I've been outside.
Everybody's all good. You know?
Thank you guys back for my time.
Yeah, see?
Five hours.
Thanks for coming, Steve.
Four hours. Sitting there looking at my watch.
Oh, my goodness. That's tough. Yeah, I went home at 9:30, like, I get home, and Mike said, "You wanna go to the fire site?" A long day, working this...
Okay. Another minute or so? Better rip.
Jacket was a bad choice.
Yeah. Put some ceiling curtains in here. Circulate the air a little bit. Perfect.
Agreed, we had to have a vote, I didn't want to...
Yeah, and that's my, so maybe next time we have that, you know, or then you'd have a second. I wasn't gonna do it, because I was gonna say no, so it made a weird thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's interesting. Could be they like hills. Some people seek out hills when they're running. That'd be a perfect one. Some people like hills while they're running, and that would be a perfect one. Really. I know people that literally seek out hills. Your point was good, though.
That was a great, great point.
Right. Right, exactly.
It's a little bit safer than running the whole length of Ward Hill. I'm going there, chairman.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, everybody. We'll go ahead and get started again. Okay. Next item on the agenda is application number 20006 by Melton Solar One for final site plan approval of a proposed 23.51 acre 5.0, and what is MW again, please? MW solar farm located near 6161 East River Road in an RR Zone District. May I ask who's here representing the applicant, please?
Dan, you're unmuted.
Your mic's muted.
Actually, it showed that it wasn't muted.
Yeah, now you show you're muted. It did show you were unmuted, but we did not hear you.
There could be a Heather.
I'm seeing the same thing, guys.
Yeah, it shows you unmuted, but there's no sound.
Dave or Mark, do you want to start for him?
Can you provide an additional phone number so that he can call in on his cellphone?
Yes, I, yes, I can. It should be in the Zoom invite as well. One moment, I'll try and forward.
Dan, can you confirm that you have that number? Just to reiterate, we are still not hearing you.
Dan, can you hear us? Okay, if you can, go to your email with the invite and call in on a regular line.
Yep, he's putting in his earbuds, so it looks like he's doing that.
This is from Melton Solar?
Yes. 20006.
Charlie, are you there? Can you hear us?
You are unmuted as well, Charlie. There you go.
Yeah, hey, Greg, yep, we're here.
Thank you, we hear you.
Hopefully Dan gets his working.
Nothing yet, Dan.
Dan, if you can hear me, I just sent you in the chat the phone number to dial in. I'm looking for your password now.
It'd be his, or it'd be us. I think it'd be us.
I had a problem.
Dan, does that help? Is that you?
The problem now is you're gonna have to turn off your...
Yeah.
So mute your phone, even though we can't hear you.
And did that, are you able to hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Okay, great, everyone, I can hear you just fine, too. Sorry about that. Good evening tonight, and thanks, everyone, I really appreciate your time tonight. My name is Dan Campatello with Delaware River Solar, joined here tonight with Dave Plant and Mark Potter from Bergen Associates, and also Sarah and Charlie Remelt, the landowners of the property located at 6161 East River Road. We're proposing a five-megawatt solar project, community solar project in the town of Henrietta. And do I need to speak a little louder? Is everyone still able to, is everybody okay?
If you could speak a little louder, that'd be nice.
Okay, great. We're proposing a five-megawatt community solar farm in the, in the town of Henrietta, located generally at 6161 East River Road. Delaware River Solar is a New York State-based company. We've developed over 100 megawatts of community solar to date in many counties and towns across the state. Today, we have over 55 of those megawatts operational and providing power. We have a few projects in Monterey County already operating today and providing power to a little over 1,200 residents directly in Monterey County. This, this solar farm, like all of our others, will be available for people, homeowners or renters or small businesses to subscribe to the solar farm. They'll be able to receive the energy from the solar farm over the existing RGNE lines in the town, and they'll pay for the energy that they use, just like they do today, except they'll know that it's coming from the solar farm in their community. We've been before the, the town board, back in this past February, we received a special use permit for this project. We, we just recently, last week, were at the Conservation Board as well, where we received some comments, and I believe that they're sending some comments back to the planning board now regarding that review. And we also have received the town engineer comments as well, which we responded to. And we've been able to address each of the comments that were in that, that very detailed comment letter. I can share the screen if you'd like to know... Just gonna bring that up now. Okay, is everyone able to see the screen?
Yes.
Okay. So what we're proposing is, you'll see on the site plan here, this is East River Road. What we're proposing is an access entrance off of East River, which will come into the site, and provide temporary construction access and permanent access for any site maintenance that we need to do throughout the lifespan of the solar farm. Typically, site access would be about four to six times per year to go in and mow the lawn or replace panels if needed, do some maintenance on the, on the, on the site as needed. The, the total area of this, of this sort of lot area is 47.8 acres. Within that, we're proposing a fenced area of 24.7 acres, which will encompass the solar farm, and the solar farm itself will sit on approximately 16.2 acres of disturbed area. This is a tracking system, meaning that the panels are oriented north to south rather than east to west. And what they do is they'll be facing the sun in the morning, and they'll follow it throughout the night or throughout the day until the sun sets at night, and then they'll revert back to their position in the morning facing east. This lets us generate up to about 30% more kilowatt-hours during the day under that five-megawatt nameplate capacity of the project. So we get a little bit more efficiency out of the system that way. We are proposing a little bit of tree clearing for the project around the edges of the system. This is particularly important on the southeast and west sides of the system, where we can't have trees too close to solar panels, otherwise they would obstruct the sunlight shining on the solar panels, and they wouldn't operate. So we're proposing just a little bit of tree clearing along the edges, and we'll be retaining a very thick and dense border of trees around the property on all sides. Within the solar farm itself, there are a few hedgerows, which you can see, actually move to an aerial map, you can see a few of the hedgerows that exist here in the property. Most of this area has actually been cleared, this is a much older aerial image, but most of this area has been cleared of trees, as they reverted to, to cropland, which is currently farmed as corn and hayfields. The Remelt's own, the lands, most of the lands surrounding this project, they own a total of five lots, and the project is proposed to be cited on three of those lots. Under New York State law and Public Service Commission law and requirements RGNE, every solar farm is, is, needs to be cited on its own tax parcel for, to be able to operate. And so we're proposing is to combine these lots together into one, one individual parcel that the entire project will sit on. Go back to the, to the site plan now. Our access road is, is 20 feet wide, and this will meet all local state, local state fire codes. We will apply for a permit with DOT for a road entrance here, which is very similar to the road entrance that currently exists. This will be a pervious surface, it's considered pervious by the... This will be a pervious surface. It's considered pervious by D E C, meaning that water can penetrate through the access road. And I can actually zoom in a little bit more so you can see some of the site details here. At the end of our access road, we'll be placing an inverter pad and a transformer pad. These will actually condition the electricity that's produced by the solar panels. Solar panels create direct current electricity, and the energy running on a power line is alternating current. So we need to treat that energy and convert it into alternating current before it's sent down the underground lines that will eventually rise above ground closer to the access road so that they can meet the RGNE poles that are above ground today. Once the power is on the grid, it really goes everywhere. We have a meter on our system at one of these three poles, and RGNE also has a meter as well, so we can tell how much energy we're producing throughout the day, throughout the year. And everybody, as you know, has a meter at their home or their business, and so they can tell how much power they consume. When RGNE goes out and reads those meters, they send us that information, and we can tell how much people, how much power people are consuming. Our customers in Monroe County, in the Rochester area, including myself, get a 10% discount on electricity from these solar farms. And there is an opportunity for some of the power from these solar farms to be distributed to what's called a community choice aggregation program, which many towns in Monroe County are thinking of joining on to, where town residents would be opted into receiving power from one of these systems. They could opt out of that program if they wanted to get their energy from somewhere else. But it is getting a little bit more attention and subscribership as time goes on. I think that's really kind of the general overview of the site plan there. We did get, just wanted to kind of re, make that point to the board, that we did get the comment responses from from the town last week from Chris Martin, and we've responded to those. So we, I think that we addressed every issue that, or every comment that was in that from the town, county, from the town and the county agencies that have been reviewing the project.
Thank you very much. Chair will recognize Mrs. Brill.
Thank you. Can you reiterate what has changed since we last met?
Right. Sorry about that. A few changes have been made to make sure that the site is actually designed properly, given the hedgerows and the tree clearing that's needed. Also, we've brought the setbacks to the 100, within 100 foot buffers of the D E C wetlands to make sure that we're not encroaching on those wetlands. And really, the site has just been kind of value engineered to make sure that we're getting the most efficiency out of it.
Thank you for commenting. I have nothing further this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brill. Borkowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
You mentioned that you can address all the comments in here, and I think that this is kind of, as much it's kind of a new thing for us. I think that you've got kind of a cut and dry thing here. As long as you're keeping the buffering for the neighbors, that's my biggest concern. So just make sure we're taking care of the neighbors so they're not seeing this. And I know that you talked about that last time, so I'm all good.
Borkowski. Chair will recognize Mr. Page.
Yes. Along with Mr. Borkowski, it's been around an hour going through this packet and working it up and marking it, and only to receive on July 7th your response that you covered every single concern that was addressed. The only question I have would be probably for Mr. Martin is why would we require six inches of the topsoil in the solar array?
Yes, Mr. Page, that is, you know, a town requirement that we'd like to see at least a minimum of six inches of the topsoil. I guess the question that I would have for the applicant is, do you tend to do any grading for this project?
No, no, there is no grading for the, for this project that will be needed.
Okay, so you wouldn't need a stormwater pollution prevention plan because you're disturbing less than an acre, or with the roadway, you're certainly over an acre, but...
Right, we actually are, we will be required to have a slip for this project. Mark Potter has prepared that, and that... We are definitely over that one acre limit to trigger a slip.
Okay, but there's no mass grading, so you really are going to pretty much just, you know, maybe do some light leveling off when you remove the trees. But other than that, you know, there really isn't a need to topsoil except for the areas that are disturbed by the road going in or something like that.
That's correct, right.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
That's excellent application.
I would just like to add that the two reasons for having the topsoil, one is, as Chris mentioned, it's for runoff. So again, if they're leaving the existing topsoil on there, they're okay. The second thing is, under the solar codes that we are in the process of adopting, which these guys have agreed to live up to, even though they will be implemented after the approval, it does require there be pollinators or nitrogen fixers planted under the solar panels so that it regenerates the soil so that, you know, when these solar rays come out, it will be really fertile soil for potential agricultural use.
Thank you. Chair will recognize Mr. Record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have, I guess I have a question now only because I'm seeing from the plans, the, again, excellent application. We've been with this all along, and I appreciate all the work that this team has done to acquiesce to town as we walk through this together. I guess this is a point of just learning for me. South is on the bottom of the page in the sheet that I'm looking at. And are these panels now facing west? Why are they oriented north-south versus east-west?
Sure. Right, so you are correct that the site plan you're looking at is oriented north to south. The panel arrays are as well. As I was explaining earlier, I can actually give you kind of a visual here of how the solar panels work. So they'll be oriented facing east in the morning. Actually, for your view, that's this way. And they'll be facing the sun every morning. They're on a tracker system, meaning that they will track the sun throughout the day and follow it until the sun sets at night. In the morning, they'll revert back to their position, or at the end of the day, they'll revert back to their position facing east so that they can catch the sun in the morning. That extra orientation that we get out of that tracker system gives us up to almost up to 30% more kilowatt hour production throughout every day. Whereas if the panels were faced, just facing south, they would not get as much direct sunlight onto the panel surface themselves.
Absolutely correct. I guess I didn't understand that that changed from what was a static south configuration to now a tracking system. So these are different pole connections than the tracker system has to be. Is that a concrete base?
No, no, the tracker will still be able to be pile-driven or augered into the ground.
So how many panels per pole still? Are they single poles to like a six-panel system?
Typically about 25 to 32 panels per array. The trackers are a little bit different, where they have just a single post in the ground, and then there's a roller bar that's strung between those two posts that the panels are fixed to on that roller bar. So they're actually a lot more stable than fixed tilt structures are. Much, a little heavier duty, galvanized steel pilings are needed to support them. But they, they all operate in concert together throughout the day, tracking this one.
Okay, great. I appreciate that knowledge, because that was, that's something I thought we talked about before.
So that's, that was new to me, so thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Record. Chair will recognize Mr. McIntyre.
Chairman, Dan, I had a question on a special use permit. There was a question here, item E, whether the post use would create material hazards for dangers to the public, et cetera, et cetera. The response that was here said that the generation of the electrical power on site retains a secure area. Does that mean the perimeter fencing, or will this high voltage have its own separate secured area?
So I could point that out to where that, where the voltages are located on site. There will be an eight-foot tall deer fence or farm fence surrounding the project site. And that will be enclosed on all sides for the gates at the front of the entrance, the front of the access road here on the east side of the project. That perimeter fence is, the height is required by the natural electric code. And the fence that we use in our projects is a 10-gauge galvanized steel woven, I'm sorry, mesh deer fence, so typical to what you'd see on a cattle farm. Something that can contain livestock on a farm. The actual voltage is all collected here at the transformer and the inverter pad, and that is sent underground along the access road through an underground medium voltage cable until that rises up on the utility poles that meet the above-ground RGNE utility poles. The voltages are the same, essentially, almost to the same voltage that's on the RGNE line today, and that's why they need to be above ground when they meet the RGNE poles. But yes, the voltages will all be contained inside the site or underground at a depth, at the minimum depth of 36 to 48 inches.
What type of voltage do you output? How big, 41, 35, 408 volts, what?
It depends per project on the voltage of the line that we're tying into. On East River Road, there's a 34 and a half kilovolt line that RGNE operates there. So our voltage has to be at or below that voltage.
Oh, good. You're saying below 408?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Is it below 408 volts?
408 volts?
It's 408 volts, right?
No, 34 and a half kilovolts.
34 and a half. So they're stepping it up, so they're high voltage they're putting out. That area where you generate and step up the voltage on site, is that secured in any way? Or is it just...
The area is, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm just saying, is that where you step up the voltage and generate your power and presumably high voltage, is that in its own fenced secure area? Or is that just in behind the perimeter fence?
So the voltage is actually considered medium voltage. High voltage is typically considered over 60 kilovolts. And the distribution line that RGNE operates on East River Road is the same, you know, type of line that runs throughout our communities. And those are all medium voltage distribution lines. The voltage that we're creating on site in the transformer pad, I can actually show you a picture of one of the inverters here. I'm sorry, we don't have a, don't have a sheet for that in this plan set. But the inverter is, itself is a contained system. It cannot be accessed unless someone has a special key for that. The voltage is contained inside of the inverter and the transformer pads. They're very similar to the types of transformers that you see at, on the roads where there are buried electrical lines throughout our communities. In fact, they're almost the same equipment. So they are safe. They're safe to approach. There is no separate fence within side of the system. That's not a requirement of the natural electric code. The only requirement that we need to meet to safely operate is to have the perimeter fence around the entire system. But the inverter and transformer pads themselves are safe equipment to approach and cannot be accessed by someone who doesn't have access to those and the correct keys.
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. Chair will recognize Mr. Neal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not real familiar with solar power and what danger I guess there might be, but is there any danger for a vehicle that goes flying into? Is there any danger for police or fire or ambulance that they should know ahead of time?
I'm sorry, didn't really catch the first part of your question. Could you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Well, my question is simply, is if a car went into the solar panels, is there a danger to fire or police or ambulance people that they should know ahead of time?
I think the risk of having a car fly into the solar panels is very low. We are well over 1,500 feet off of East River Road here. You would have to travel up the access road into the site to get to it. In terms of safety for local emergency responders, many, most emergency response responders in the state are now trained on how to approach photovoltaic systems, whether it's residential rooftop or community solar systems that we're proposing. We do also offer training to all local fire departments. So we're happy to do that and bring them on site, show them around where things are. But most emergency response, they are already trained on these, on how to approach and respond to an emergency around these sites.
Oh, as part of your normal procedure, you would contact fire and police and let them know that there's some things to be aware of?
Actually, may I comment? This is Charlie Ramel. I'm actually a battalion chief with the fire district, so there is going to be a lot of training. Facility is actually going to be highlighted to the district and the members just because of my involvement. One last question. I actually had to comment.
Neil, I just address your question a little bit.
Sure.
That's part of why the codes, the question about cars crashing into it and that type of stuff. That's part of why in the code it requires a particular setback from any major roads as well as houses. The primary danger is what we would consider high voltage. I know from a transmission line, he was saying it's not high voltage. When you're in the kilovolts, to mere mortals, it's high voltage. You know, from a transmission range, yes, it's not considered a high voltage transmission range. This is the same volts that runs in the power lines that go down your street, the distribution, not necessarily to your house, but the ones that carry the power out to your house, similar voltages. But obviously, you would never want to touch those. So any of the electrical stuff that's working in that voltage, under PSC, there's a lot of rules as far as how those have to be protected so that somebody can't just walk up and touch, you know, a hot and a ground and fry themselves. So they'll have to follow, in that construction, they'll have to follow all the regulations regarding that to protect that. So I couldn't tell you what they all are. I just know they're extensive in that, you know, they'll have to meet them.
Is, I'm not sure that you can answer this, but there's not much of a chance that somebody will touch one of those lines that are on the telephone. But are these lines at a level that somebody could see them, please?
They're either typically, they're run underground over to the utility pole and then up the pole in case, so no, you cannot touch them, or they're on a pole at the transformer and overhead there. I don't know, do you guys, which of those two options are you, are you piping underground over to the utility pole?
Yeah, we're actually doing both options there. So most of the line will actually be trenched underground along the south side of the access road. That will then rise up on a pole to meet the utility line, and all of that will be shielded, just like any other distribution line is shielded in our communities when they make ground level to above-ground connections. There are many examples of this, of these connections around... There are many examples of this, of these connections around our communities today. Anytime you're driving down a road and you don't see power lines on the street, if there are submerged power lines that eventually rise up to meet above ground power lines, we make the same connections. We have to follow the same utility design standards. Those are incorporated into the site design now. And Argene will be verifying those connections with us as they commission the project. So they are all safe and to property utility standards for any below ground to above ground connections.
Thank you.
One last question, and this actually comes from a recommendation from the conservation board. Is that, obviously, we're not looking for a lot of landscaping at all, actually. But they had said, we recommend the applicant consider contributing to a town tree bank. That would need additional trees, would you be willing to do that?
I think that was definitely raised at the conservation board. I think the, there was also mention or discussion of adding more trees to the front of the access road, to the front of the property where some trees currently exist, although they need to be trimmed backwards or removed. And we are definitely open to donating some trees to the local tree, to the tree bank. If you'd like to get some information on that and how to do that.
Okay, so you would be willing to make some donations to a tree bank in Henrietta?
This is a supervisor, I'll work with Charlie to fill him in more on that. But basically, we created that for developers who couldn't fit all of their required trees. There's a certain number of trees per disturbed acre formula. And when they couldn't always fit them, they essentially were waived. Instead of waiving them, we are asking that they instead essentially put them in their town park or in our right of ways, especially where trees were lost to the Emerald Ash Core. So that's what the tree bank represents. It's, you know, you can either plant the trees themselves and we'll give you the locations or you can put in, we have the average cost to put in a tree at a town park. We don't care which. But I'll work with Charlie, you know, because like if he even wants to do some special grove or something that's of interest, or in a park that's of interest to him, he can pick the park. We have no shortage of dead trees from the Emerald Ash Core.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Dan, I'm all set.
Awesome, thank you. Mr. Mistrill, anything?
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Martin?
No, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mrs. Brill, did you have something extra?
I just want to ask Charlie, can you just confirm that you are okay to work with supervisor regarding those trees?
Absolutely, once he, we'll sit down and give you some more information on it. And we'll, we'll see what it entails and certainly try to come up something that'll work out for everybody.
Thank you. And Dan, if you could take your mouse and just, for my bearings, I don't recall from the original plans I was looking at. Can you just circle where the Romell residence is, just from my bearings here?
Charlie, I think, are we showing this on the site plan here?
Yeah, it's, so go north, with your mouse. Hey, right, whoop, stop, back south, south. Right there.
Gotcha, thank you. Thanks, Charlie.
Yep, you're welcome.
All set, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if there's nothing further, the board or the chair will entertain a motion.
Motion?
Mrs. Brill?
I'll second. This is Mr. Page.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Opinion of the chair, the ayes have it, the motion carries, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great, everyone, thanks very much, really appreciate your time tonight. We're looking forward to moving forward.
Okay. Last item on the agenda this evening is application number two zero 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 seven, two five nine nine Eastern Henrietta Road redevelopment for final site plan approval of miscellaneous site and building improvements to the property located at twenty-five ninety-nine Eastern Henrietta Road in the commercial V one zone district. Who might that be representing the applicant this evening?
It would be Tim Harris with Pass Road Associates. Good evening, everybody.
Hi, Tim, we're here tonight, thanks for being here.
Tim, can you move that microphone closer to your mouth for me, please?
If I get any closer, my head's going to get bigger.
And I was kidding for the record.
Craig put you up to that, didn't he? I'm going to try to share the screen here real quick and we'll get going, I'll try to be brief. So again, Tim Harris with Pass Road, two forty-two West Main Street, Rochester, I think you guys all know that. But here tonight, representing Embrager Brothers Holdings. I believe Dave Merrick, their director of development, is on the phone with us this evening, texted a while ago. So we're here tonight asking for site plan approval for the, I'll say, improvements to the twenty-five ninety-nine Eastern Henrietta Road Plaza. And for those keeping score, it's the Beers of the World Plaza and then the Bottle Return on the south side there. So here tonight, we're doing some, proposing some improvements to the facade. New, kind of new window treatments, new storefronts, new siding and some other materials along the storefront there, which you can see on the screen. Various materials will be used, metal siding, wood siding, some stone veneer, new storefronts like I mentioned, and some EFS as well. The colors and materials will actually complement the Starbucks across the street, believe it or not. It doesn't look too similar on the rendering here, but it will complement what was done across the street to kind of tie those two projects in a little bit. As I flip through the drawing here, you can kind of see just some of the improvements that are being proposed. There we go. On the bottom left, you can sort of see the existing facade. The middle space of the plaza is currently vacant with Beers of the World on the north side, the Bottle Return establishment on the right side, or south side, I'm sorry, excuse me. And if I can just flip drawings quickly. So what we have here is just a cover sheet to the plans that were submitted to the town a few weeks ago. And what we've done is kind of overlaid what we're proposing over an aerial. It's just our cover sheet, pretty standard. What we are proposing is some landscaping on the north side, trying to remove some pavement and provide kind of a division between the plaza to the north and our plaza. And add some landscape islands throughout the Beers of the World or the twenty-five ninety-nine Eastern Henrietta Road Plaza, which will kind of help with traffic flow a little bit. People cut in the corner, so to speak, between Eastern Henrietta and Hawkins Road. And then also provide just some sprucing up of the parking lot. Right now, it's a sea of asphalt, so, you know, this will provide some visual improvements to, you know, this along with the building facade, will provide some visual improvements to help. Going to be drawn another tenant, which is the goal for that middle space. Last week, just to kind of bring this board up to speed, last week, we applied for and received a parking variance. So that's all taken care of. We've also been to the conservation board, received their approval, a couple minor comments there, which we're taking care of. And we did receive the engineering comments from Mr. Martin and other town staff, which we've addressed. Hoping you guys have our responses in front of you. If you don't, I'd be more than happy to go through those. What I did not include were the towns consultant, Stan Tech, for the landscape comments. I did not include responses, but I can say, there's nothing, there's no red flags there. Everything we can, that they've either commented on or suggested, we can take care of. And then one other comment I wanted to touch on was from the building department. And Mr. Wilson had mentioned reallocating some handicap parking spaces from the original approval, or the original application, excuse me, which we did. There were a bank of two, if you can see my mouse, four ADA spaces here, four here. What we've done is put two, two, two and two, kind of spread them out throughout the plaza along the front edge. So that kind of provides some good opportunity for easy access there. In terms of lighting, we are including, if I can flip here and not mess this up. Hopefully, you guys can still see that, but included, we're including some new light poles in the new islands that we're recreating. They'll be twenty-four foot tall, meeting town standards, LED fixtures. And then I can just flip to the landscape plan really quickly. One more, we're getting there, there we go. So you can kind of see the lighting layout, the contours there. No building mounted lights, per se. There'll be some canopy lights underneath, but they won't really shine too far into the parking lot. And then you can see the various trees and other landscaping materials that we're adding throughout the whole plaza to kind of spruce it up. So with that, I will be quiet and entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you, Jim. I like this project, I like the landscaping on that plaza. To me, it's never Beers of the World, it's the old Wegmans. I had my first job at Old Wagon there, so that's forever dear to my heart. Thank you, the chair will recognize Mrs. Brill, start with you again.
Thank you, I have no comments on this.
Thank you.
It's going to be an awesome improvement to that corner, and I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, the chair will recognize Mr. Page.
Yes, I read your comments, the responses to Chris's comments. And the two that I had out were the landscaping issues and the handicap parking. You've already hit on them, I'm all set.
Mr. Record?
Turn that back on, thank you, Mr. Chairman. What, just getting into the lighting real quick, because you know, I'd like to get into that with you. The wood Kelvin are the lights? A hundred Cs, fifty Ks?
Going to have to look, I'll be honest. If we flip to this, can you see that, Craig, or no? They are fifty K, yep, they are fifty K, hundred C.
Okay, so that's, is that the yellow light we like?
It's more whitish than it is yellowish.
Yellow is side pressure, somebody.
The light that's pretty white. Not quite in the blue, but pretty.
Right, is that what we were?
What we were talking about, the more for streetlights.
Yeah, but I mean, this, you know, is a great project and it's absolutely, you know, a plus in my mind. I just wanted to make sure we didn't light it up like a Walmart.
I'm not afraid of the Walmart.
Walmart, I don't want to see us light it up like Patrick Boniak.
Yeah, no, we are definitely not lighting it up like Patrick, that's for sure.
Yeah, I just, you know, I just wanted to make it a warmer, you know, and I forget which Kelvin we were talking about before with our streetlights. It would make it.
More in the three to four K range.
Yeah. So I don't know if that's something you can just take a look at, instead of the fifty K?
Yeah, sure.
It's got to be five K, not fifty K.
Well, he's got fifty, that's what my other question was, he's got hundred C, fifty K.
That would be more like Patrick. No, it's, it's colored five K.
Correct. It's five K, not fifty?
Correct, it's the five, yeah, correct.
Would you be willing to take a look and see if the four K does too much to your spread?
Sure.
Yeah, I want you to keep your spread, but if we can drop it to a four K, I think that would be a much better appeal to that corner. Might be what, you know, but of course, you know, talk to the owner and make sure that's what he wants. The only other comment I have is, there's a stone, a placked stone in the southeast corner?
Yep.
Is that staying?
It is, it's actually, believe it or not, in the state right of way.
Yeah, okay.
So that's, we have no, I don't know if that.
Should go near.
You can kind of see it right there, if I zoomed in enough.
Yeah, okay. I don't know if that's a landmark concept, historical, or what?
I believe it is. But it is in the right of way, it'll, you know, we're not proposing to touch that, move that.
Okay, no, that's great, there was just, I wanted to bring that up because I wasn't, I know it's there, I just don't know quite honestly why, if it's landmark or historical, to make note of it. So other than that, no, I like that cleaning this up. I grew up here also with Wegmans, you know, from that group, so it's going to be interesting to see this change and adapt. You know, I would caution the board, prior to approval, I do have a text message, I can enter into the record, of Mr. Harris whining about how long the meeting took tonight.
Oh, really? There was no such text message.
It is a government phone, it's spoilable. Thank you, great project, Mr. Harris.
Thank you.
I'm all set, no comments.
Thank you, Mr. Record. Chair will recognize Mr. McIntyre.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have no comments or concerns. All of my concerns were met previously by the instructions we were given or by.
Very good. Very good, thank you. Chair will recognize Mr. Neal. Thank you. Chair will recognize Mr. Borkowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick thing, Tim, we love when you give us the comprehensive stuff. It makes long meetings go a little quicker, so thank you.
You're welcome.
All set, Mr. Borkowski?
I am.
I'm sorry, okay, thank you. Mr. Mistrill? Okay, thank you, Mr. Martin?
Yeah, I have two things. My one question is, the loading dock on the north side of the road, or north side of the building, rather.
Sure.
I saw your turning movements, but I still have some concerns, Tim. I think that the cab, the truck is going to stick out a little too far. I mean, right now, you have it, you know, cranked over. Is there any way that you can extend the pavement to the north? Or instead of having a diagonal loading dock, can it be more perpendicular to the building?
That's something I can take back to the applicant, sure. I don't think, I don't see why that could be angled a little bit more.
Yeah, I did talk, I did talk to Mr. Actwell before he departed, and that was one of his concerns.
Retired, not departed.
Oh, retired, thank.
Just saying. Yeah, just saying.
I think he's immortal.
Yeah, that's for sure.
Yeah, so that was one concern. The other one, I'm sorry, the other one was more, so if you could just take a look at that, Tim, and see what you can do with it? You know, I just want to make sure that we can get a fire truck around there if we have to.
Sure.
And then my second last concern is, not concern, rather, it's more of an observation. There used to be, of course, access from the plaza to the north to the parking lot so they could get to the light. And, yeah, right there. And of course, the Beers of the World went in, they put in the gate and locked it. Obviously, with the configuration of this, that is, it's going to be taken off altogether.
Correct.
I guess it's more of an observation than anything else. You know, sometimes it is harder getting in and out, particularly making left hand turns from, you know, the plaza to the north. However, you know, I don't know, is there an agreement? Was there ever an agreement in place between the two plazas that there had to be access? I guess maybe there wouldn't have been, the gate would have been not gone out, but.
Yeah, well, you're right, that in theory, there should have been, would have been. I'm not aware of anything. I can certainly bring that up to the owner or the developer and, you know, check that, check to see if there's anything in the deed that does provide access or some sort of access easement between the two parcels.
Chris, this is Patty. Why was that put up? Was required, who put it up?
Gate, I can answer that, having talked to the person who put it up. He was tired of people, it was basically a squabble between neighbors. And there was people cutting through and causing problems for the Beers of the World properly, property. So they put the gate up.
So that owner put the gate up?
It's my understanding.
Okay. But according to this, it's part of the demolition and it's getting removed, correct?
With a landscape, that's why Chris wanted to make sure that there isn't, they're not violating some, any kind of property agreement, easement, anything like that. Yeah, the dark lights are improving.
Okay, that answers my question, thank you.
It's going to be nice.
Yeah, it certainly looks nice with the landscaping there, Tim. But like Steve said, I just want to make sure we can cover all bases, that's all.
And that's a great point, yeah, I'll check into that with the developer to make sure there's nothing we're voiding, I guess, I'll say.
And other than that, I think we're all set for seeker.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the, just looking at that, go back to that, Tim, if you would, zoom back in on that sidewalk, ADA. You're pulling that ADA back, even though it lines up with the front of the crosswalk with the stop bar on the south side?
This here, you're saying?
Yeah, you've got a, you've got a new sidewalk with a new ADA ramp?
Yeah, so the, I guess the thought process there was to get, if somebody was coming down Eastern Henrietta Road and didn't want to, you know, depart the sidewalk, to use Mr. Martin's term, depart the sidewalk here and then come into the parking lot, they'd have a. have a little bit more, I guess, they'd get away from the busier road a little bit first before they could, you know, access the plaza.
Yeah, okay, all right, so you're still keeping the one at the stop bar?
Oh, yeah, yeah, for sure.
The second one pulled back is for the access to the plaza.
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Okay, seeker review indicates the action under consideration is an unlisted action as per section 617.7C1VIIII. The Henrietta Planning Board is lead agency, has determined that the proposed action described below will not have a significant effect on the environment, and that a draft environmental impact statement will not be required. The action under consideration is a site plan application by FSI Construction. It is an unlisted action and will require a conditional negative declaration. The purpose of this application is for final site plan approval of miscellaneous site and building improvements to the property located at 2599 East Henrietta Road in a commercial B1 zoned district. All relevant areas of environmental concern were identified. Evaluation and examination were carefully made in relation of the existing conditions versus the proposed site improvements. It has been determined that there will be no adverse environmental effect as a result of the proposed action. I, James Gruner, therefore make the motion that we make a negative declaration and that the chairman be authorized to sign the statement of environmental significance. Do I have a sufficient second?
Second.
McIntyre? Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion?
I'll take a vote on that.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's late. You're all in favor of the seeker, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. In the opinion of the chair, the ayes have it, motion carries, thank you. Chair will entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll...
Mr. Record?
Yep.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
I will second.
Thank you.
Question, should the, should the approval be contingent upon meeting the two requirements that the director of building and planning brought up?
Chris, can that be done administratively, or should we make it a condition of the approval?
Was that my comments, or was that...
That they basically designed the loading dock to the satisfaction of the director of building and fire prevention, and that they ensure that there is no easement, access easement requirement with regards to that opening? Your, basically, your two comments.
Yeah, I would like to have that as a condition, only because I don't know if I put one of them in my comments. Let me see, or just reading through it real quick.
Yeah, you did mention that, Chris.
Yeah, I do have that at number four, and then, but I don't think I have the gate in there.
No, that's not.
So I think just the gate would be fine, if you just want to make that a condition of the approval, to make sure that the applicant checks and make sure that it's not a requirement and it can be closed off.
You're good with that, Tim?
Absolutely.
Mr. Record, you're...
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the application with that condition.
Thank you. Mr. Borkowski, have the second?
Correct.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. In the opinion of the chair, the ayes have it, the motion carries. Tim, congratulations, thank you.
All right, thank you. Have a good night, everybody.
You too.
Motion to adjourn?
Mr. Borkowski, motion to adjourn at 9:55. Thank you.